Good evening, everybody. At this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised, these proceedings are being recorded for those physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available in the front entrance of the council chamber and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and participating in VIA Zoom will be called upon at an appropriate time, and each person is allowed three minutes of speaking time. A call to order convening in regular meeting, this is workshop July 11, 2023 at 5:00 PM. City Attorney, can you please lead us in pledge? Thank you, Adrian. MC, Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Rodriguez Robles.
Present.
Mayor Protem Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Hesse.
Present.
Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. Item A, public comment, this opportunity for members of the public to comment on items on the agenda only. At the special meeting of the city council of pursuit to California law, the city council will be taking public comment on items listed on the agenda. Do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Item B, new business priority workshop continuing. Conrad?
Are you guys okay if I do this sitting down?
Yeah.
All right. So, we continued with Councilmember Wilson's suggestion, broke these out. The first page on page five should be what we've already covered. And, oh, thank you. Should be what we've already covered, page five, and then we'll continue down this. I think we can blow these out in fairly quick order, and then the plan is just to come back with the things that we say we want to look at and put them into some type of priority and order, if that works for you. So, we are on page six on your papers, and sidewalk and storm drains on Michigan. We do have, there was a preliminary plan done in 2019 for Michigan Street beautification and some walkability, so we have some of that planned, at least the preliminary and some design work, so it's something that we can tear off of. There's a great deal of effort going to go on on Commerce next to Michigan, and then, you know, Michigan has some development coming in there over the next 10 years. So this is a great time to have that, have that plan in place, and as development comes in, then we can start doing this infill, and as sites develop, they can do the pieces, and then what we end up doing somewhere down the road, 10 or 15 years, is tying those pieces together. So it's a longer term view. Barton Road, or Barton Mount Vernon Tree Landscape Lighting Plan, that's the same thing. We have a preliminary that was done in 2019 as well with a landscaping plan. Part of what we're doing on Barton Road is these new businesses that are coming in. We are holding them to a fairly high standard on landscaping. They're going to need to put in benches, more intense and lush landscaping in their area to try and do this organically, and then include the landscaping and the tree planting along Barton Road. And so Barton Road Streetscape, the one after that, kind of falls into that same category. So we do have a preliminary plan on both of those. Any questions?
Okay, thanks. All right, thank you. So, on the storm drain, of those first three storm drain issues, it says for further discussion. Is that something we're also going to discuss? Does that mean you want to discuss that tonight?
No, I want to bring those back. The same thing with the ones that we had on page five.
Okay.
Seeking, you know, the continued update, but certainly the further discussion items, because those, I think we want to, I don't think we're done with it. I think we can put this together into a better package than to discuss, and once we have all the priorities, we can say, look, storm drain is number one, or number three, or number seven, and here's the tasks that we want to follow. But I don't think, we beat it up pretty solidly as far as, yes, we want this, yes, it's something we want to do, but now the discussion falls into where in our priorities does that fall?
Okay. And the traffic circulation study, is that, will that will, or will that not be a part of that traffic study that you were talking about earlier that's going to be around September timeframe?
The traffic study in September is just the speed survey.
Okay.
So the traffic circulation is part of the general plan update. It requires a circulation element, and that does study that, what our streets are, the main roads, road widths, those type of things, for the city as a whole, and look at the circulation and how to get around in the city.
Yeah.
There shouldn't be any significant changes to that, but as part of that update, we do need to look at that, you know, probably, once again, since we're on Michigan, probably some redefinition of what Michigan's going to look like from where it is today to someplace in the future. You know, I could see that being, Michigan looking more like Van Buren or Pico as far as the width and the...
Right.
But not necessarily Mount Vernon.
Yeah, I understand.
Because we'll have Commerce, but that's part of the study. Those areas are part of that traffic study.
Yeah.
Someplace that's a more, you know, along observation is a more defined street. Nothing's really going to change, so that probably will stay the same.
I've seen that Michigan Walkability Study and the design plan, and to my best of mind, the way I remember it, it looked pretty nice. Also, the, further down, the Barton Mount Vernon Tree Landscape Lighting Plan, and then the Road Streetscape, is that all part of that Barton Road Business District specific plan update that we're, is that complete, and that we're basing it on that?
So that will feed into it. So the Barton Road specific plan does have landscape requirements and streetscape requirements, but the overall for what we're talking about here is not just for new stuff, but to go back retroactively and do some of these cleanup things that, you know, right coming down Barton Road in front of City Hall, we've got a hodgepodge of two or three different types of plantings, a couple of different kinds of trees. There's some block wall, there's some wood fence, there's some other stuff that, you know, to get some consistency throughout.
Okay.
And so the specific plan for new stuff covers it. We're looking to go back and, as part of this, to define what we want to see the city look like in the long term.
Overall, okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, the city manager.
I'm glad you found these, you know, these projects that were already contracted out, and that some design work was done. Looking at these, it seems on Michigan, we could tap into some variety of sources of funding, maybe the sidewalk to schools money, if that still exists. SCAG is always looking to create this 15-minute walkability bike path thing. I don't know if that could be a fit, but other than that, how would we fund this?
I think you hit the big one. There's going to be a couple of pieces. First, and remember to keep a long view on this, so we're looking at 10, 15, 20 years, that over that time, big chunks of Michigan will redevelop. You know, a stick-built house has about 100-year lifespan. A lot of those houses are getting to the end of their functional lifespan. So some of that is ripe for assembly, for new construction. Probably, as we get into the housing element, we're probably going to have to upzone some of the areas, so that is probably a place where we could accomplish that. In this process, then, the right-of-way as new construction happens will be funded by the developer.
Okay.
Then, you're correct, the safer out to schools funding is a big part of that. There's SCAG funding, there's just the regular street maintenance and repair funding, and then some of it, we're going to have to bite the bullet and it's general fund. And right now, our biggest challenge is land acquisition, not actually doing the work, because all those in-and-out jogs as you go down Michigan, that, you know, somebody owns that land, and then the neighbor at some point deeded that segment to the city, therefore the street gets wider, and then where it gets narrower, where somebody owns that land, and we need to deal with the acquisition of all those jogs in there.
And that would be when, because we wouldn't have money, so we'd have to depend on the development process for that?
We'd probably develop on development process for the majority of it. There will be some, a handful at the end, that we need to actually approach the property owner and, you know, offer to buy that eight feet or six feet of their front yard, move their fence for them, and move their water meter, and all those things that are tied to that. And that would be on our dime. Okay. Fitted on those? So the city neighborhood lighting plan, that got on here, I'm trying to figure out what the specifics were on that, if that came from one of you. Is that, go ahead.
I think that had to do with when SBCTA did the new bridge and the light posts, and they're green, I think, like the city, that if we were ever to do a lighting plan for Barton, we would incorporate that same schematic.
Okay. We can, so that's lighting standard.
I can also add that I've had more than a couple of handfuls of residents who have mentioned over the years how, you know, we all pay for streetlights, but we don't all have streetlights, and the question is, what if, since I'm paying for one, what do I have to do to get one? So, you know, I've had different explanations given to me over the years, but not quite sure what the accurate one is. So that's a question that I'm asked occasionally.
So we are working with Edison to, there are a couple of spots that we need more streetlights. One that, pardon the pun, glaring, is behind the Taco Bell across the street from the elementary school. There's a really dark pocket in there. So Edison owns and operates our streetlights, and then we pay them for the electricity and the maintenance on those. So, just like you pay for a road, maybe not the road exactly in front of your house, but you pay your taxes for the whole city roads, you pay the taxes for the whole city's street lighting, whether or not there's one in front of your house or not. But there are areas that we do need to enhance the street lighting, and that's, we are working with Edison on that, to come up with those specific spots, and then to have, certainly to have a standard along the main thoroughfares that, you know, that reflect the city, whatever the city standard is. Somebody, you said green poles, you know, put a bicycle, like, in front on top of the poles, I don't know, but something that really does say this, you're now in Grand Terrace versus just some other community.
On the street lighting, we have a lot of lighting landscaping districts, so, I mean, so we're kind of giving a mixed message to folks, because I think you're seeing we all pay for thoroughfare lighting, but we don't all pay for neighborhood lighting.
You pay, the street lighting comes through either the city paying for the thoroughfare lighting, or through the lighting landscaping district. So the landscaping and the street lighting is part of that district. Okay. The infamous Mount Vernon slope, and that's been an on-again, off-again project forever, and I think that's one that we need to come back to for further discussion and see where we want to do, and how we want to fund this, and how we want to attack this, if that's all right with you.
I have a question, city manager.
Yeah.
I had a calendar malfunction at the first workshop, so I missed about 20, 25 minutes in your introductory comments, but the quote-unquote priorities that are listed, how far back does it go, and did your research go? And these, I'm assuming these were projects that were identified by council or staff or both, that remain alive, so to speak?
We went back some, five to seven years of projects that had not been completed, that had been brought forward by council, or council members, or had been started and not finished, and wanted to either decide, is this something that we want to go forward with, or is it something that we're happy with where we're at, or it's really not that important right now? There's other things that we need to work on. And then, as we get down the list, is to put these in priorities, yes, and for argument's sake. Street lighting is our number-one priority. Whether or not we have sidewalks on Michigan is second to that. So we will assign some priorities that we can then really expend our efforts, because what we ended up with, you know, I got a list of, you know, pages and pages of priorities, but which one really is important? If everything's important, nothing's important.
Exactly. That's my concern, is the scope and breadth of these priorities, and they're all, I think, laudable in one respect or another. But when you, and I'm assuming we'll get to that, and I don't want to jump ahead, but when you have a, whatever it is, we have 25 full-time equivalents working for the city and limited financial resources, then obviously the onus is on the council to select the most important, whatever criteria we come up with, the projects or the priorities that would have the most significant impact, and recognize those that are 10 or 15 years down the road, but we start today for planning for tomorrow. So I just wanted to make sure that my understanding of the beginning of the process is consistent with your presentation.
Yes. This is where we're headed, you know, just like at home. Do I go to the dentist, paint the house, or buy a new car? Maybe I go to the dentist, and I start saving to buy a new car.
Right, thank you.
And those pieces will fall in place. Street sidewalks, curb and parkway repairs, those are ongoing. As we do the paving projects, we're picking up any sidewalk issues. So on those streets that we have paved, we did the sidewalks, we did the curb and gutters. We're also paving those as an ongoing. So I don't know that this is something we want to identify as a specific priority. It's, to me, it falls more into a just general maintenance, and we've got some, we've got some really bad cross gutters that, you know, the concrete strips where, at the intersections, that need to be repaired, and we'll probably hit some of those outside of the paving project. But those are maintenance issues, not necessarily a citywide priority, unless you, as a group, see it differently.
Hey, Conrad, I was, at the last JPIA conference I was at, they specifically, we're talking about this, the street sidewalk repairs and things, and mentioned that the agency offers a survey tool and people, and also assistance with repairs. I don't know if it might be worth talking to them or not about it.
We have used their, we have used their survey tool for this. They have a company that will do a small piece of it for, and then they're willing to charge for the rest of it. So we've used their survey, we've used some input from their consultants, and over the last year, we had two engineering students from Cal Baptist that literally walked every sidewalk in the street and took our inventory. So we have a catalog now of what needs to be done, and over the course of the next year or two, we'll be grinding, replacing those panels, doing that work.
Thank you. That's great.
Emergency operating plan, that'll come up with the general plan update. Unless there is any other specific emergency operations or emergency things that you would like to see, we're going to address that as part of the general plan. Vacant property ordinance review, I think this came up as, especially, this could be old enough that we had, during the recession, had a lot of vacant properties that were in disrepair, and looking for some way to manage that. That doesn't really seem to be an issue right now. You know, it could come up again, but if we want to keep it, it's probably a lower priority, if that's, but we'll bring that back to discuss, and you guys can put it on the tree. The rails to trails, I need to get some research on that, and then we can update where we are on that. A big part of that is the trail down Terrace that was constructed as part of the truck parking place to allow the trail to the Santa Ana River. So we have had some progress in that, and then we'll bring an update on that one. The guardrail, we are in the process of working on the scope on that. That project was, we're re-scoping it. The funds that were requested were not nearly sufficient to do all the guardrail that we would like to do. And in the process, the Caltrans standard has changed, and I forget what it is. It went from 31 inches high to 34 inches high, or something like that. So essentially, all of our guardrails are no longer in Caltrans standards. So when we go back, we have to put them, we can't just replace them, we have to put them into the new standard. So we're re-scoping, at least to get that, and the instruction at this point is to get that horrible piece along Barton Road, where the crumpled-up guardrail's been laying there for, you know, a lifetime, and get that replaced, and then we will close this grant, and then reapply for a new grant with sufficient funding to hit the other areas. And we have a lot of areas, especially out on Grant Terrace Road and, I don't know, the bluff, the Vista Grand, that needs some, that need guardrails. So the goal for us on this one is to stopgap the Barton Road piece with what we have. We're working with the state on that to close this grant. I don't know if we'll be able to pull it off, and then reapply for the new grant for the remainder of the guardrail work. It was just, it was horribly underscoped at the first pass.
I don't understand why we're fixing that whenever it seems to be in Colton. I mean, the city limits sign is up the hill from it, and if you look on Google Maps, or the city maps, or any of the maps, the line shows that it's in Colton, but I know you've said that it's a quirky border.
It is a quirky border. The pavement is in Colton.
And the shoulder is in Grand Terrace?
The shoulder is in Grand Terrace, and that's why we have that, we're responsible for that place where the homeless camp is.
We have that issue on the slope, too. The pavement's in Colton, and the hills, the bank is in Grand Terrace. It seems like it, you know...
Yeah, we got the worst of both deals.
It always requires, it always requires cooperation between the two cities. It's like we had a mother who said, I'm going to get these two children to work together no matter what.
So both those areas are quirky jurisdictional lines.
Grand Terrace's incorporation wasn't particularly a friendly process with the city of Colton, so our borders reflect some of that animosity that was created at the time. Yes, sir?
Actually, I do have to say, though, that we have a great relationship working with Colton, and, you know, we're doing some joint paving this year over on the other side of Locadina, between the two cities. So whatever started off rough is, we're getting it much better. But we are left over with some of those jurisdictional nightmares.
That paving job on the west side, that's a job well done.
Thank you. We have a sign for the Veterans Freedom Park. I think what we're looking for is some form of identification entry sign at the park, is that correct? Is that what you remember?
It's only dedicated to Park, what was it, 2015? It was a temporary sign then. So it's the front sign and the sign right by the flagpole when you walk in.
So we're looking for a permanent sign there?
Yeah, that was, like I said, I'm surprised it lasted that long, so. That was talked about, I think, at the time Mr. Duffy was supposed to acquire funds for that, so I don't know what happened to that.
Okay. We will leave that on the list and see where it falls in the priorities. The street sign replacement program, I'd like to pull that from the priorities. We are well down our way of replacing, you know, literally hundreds of street signs, and then, of course, the traffic control signs, and as things are wearing out now, we're at a place where we can start replacing as things wear out, rather than have, you know, entire neighborhoods not know what street you're on. So I'd like...
How much do those street signs cost?
I'd have to go back and look, but it was in the tens of thousands of dollars. It was part of the COVID money that we set aside for that.
So I just want to ask you, with this street sign replacement program, is this going to include the signs that we've been discussing that the truck drivers need to indicate the truck routes? I had a meeting today with a resident who's a retired trucker, and he said, you know, you guys just, you need to do more than meet the standard. The truckers will follow the routes you give them. You just need to tell them in advance. He said, get those signs way, way back away from the intersection, you know, and put more of them up, and bigger ones up, the specialty signs. And so I hope that that includes, you know, I would like for us to be on the, more is better than the bare minimum standard, you know, on that, so that we, so there can't be any excuse that it's our fault, you know, that they're not following the designated routes.
I think we discussed, was that the last meeting where we discussed the truck routes?
We did.
Before.
Make sure it's in that part of that.
We did have our public works and our city engineer go drive those truck routes and identify points for more signage that would make sense to give more warning, more time for truckers to get themselves lined up in the right lanes, to make the right turns, and then give them warnings so that they're not stuck going into someplace. So those are, we've identified them. It's going to be, you know, we have to order the signs and install them, so don't expect them next week, but this is in progress, certainly for the truck routes.
And it was always, it's always been a problem trying to get Caltrans in Colton to put signage on that off-ramp at the bottom of the slope, the Washington Street. You can't blame a trucker once he gets there, if he doesn't knows.
I drove that today, and there is zero signage there. It's something we're going to have to work with Colton. If not, I don't know, 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, we'll have to get a sign and sneak down there one night.
Well, the shoulder might be ours, anyway.
But, yeah, I was actually there today and looked at it, and so that is a joint project with Colton.
One additional comment on street signs, which is, I'm very happy to hear that that's in progress. From a risk management perspective, I'm hopeful that in addition to the signs being more visible, those signs that are covered partially or completely by trees in the yard of the nearest property owner are problematic. I can't tell you how many times on observation, when I'm walking, where people basically skid to a halt because they just see the sign at the last moment, and the sign is hard to read to begin with. So that combination can be problematic for someone who doesn't know their way. Obviously, for Grand Terrace residents, it's not a problem, and so it's easy for us to figure out who the visitors are, because they just can't get about effectively and not know what's because they just can't get about effectively and not know what's going on in terms of trying to look and find the streets they're looking for. There are a couple of places where the foliage, trees, bushes, whatever, impact the ability to see the sign. Which leads me into another area I won't talk about, but you know, in terms of ClearSight Triangle and people parking on the hard corner, my street, Finch or Cardinal, where you make a right on, off, excuse me, observation, there's a vehicle parked right on the corner. So there's no way to see who's coming up the hill or who's backing out of their driveway until you clear that vehicle. But that's a topic for another day, but it's something that maybe we can talk about at appropriate, more appropriate time.
Since we're on the topic, first, the street sign blocking. As part of our tree trimming program, we have the trees identified, the tree trimming cycle. So some of those are on this cycle. The other one, we're getting brand-new interns, starting here in a couple of weeks, for the public works again, engineering students. And one of their tasks this year, instead of walking the sidewalks, will be to drive the intersections and identify and flag those so that we can do that trimming. As far as the corner parking, you're not the only one. And we spent some quality time with the lieutenant and his traffic officer dissecting that. There is, and stop me when I'm wrong, there, as long as you're not blocking the path of travel for handicap, the ramps, there's no, there's nothing that says you can't park by the vehicle code in the curve. Now, there are some cities that have in their municipal code, something that says you're not allowed to park within 10 feet of a stop sign, you're not allowed to park inside the curve. Those, and on a different intersection, we've received multiple complaints on that.
Sure.
Asking to have the curb red painted, which, you know, if that's the case, then we have to red paint every corner in the city.
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry.
What we are doing is exploring what the other cities have and we'll probably come back to you with some type of a code amendment that will define parking in those corners because it causes sightline issues. It's just unsafe, I mean, just flat unsafe, it's hard to navigate. And I forget, I've lived in a couple of states, so I forget which state it is, but in whatever state it was, it's illegal to park on the corner. I've always, you know, in my mind, that's always, you're not allowed to do that. So when I called the lieutenant, he says, "Yes, you can." It's like, I've been missing all these opportunities for years.
I worked for a city where, as did Debra Thomas, that didn't allow parking within 150 feet of an intersection. And so, and even so, we had some risk management issues where the city was partially at fault along with Caltrans along Highway 18 with suits brought against the city. Our problem here in Grant Terrace is very gnarly, I'll be the first to admit. And it's going to take some effort to at least partially mitigate the issues. But it, we've been fortunate, and I'll just leave it at that, at this point.
And like I said, we are looking at some changes to the code to address that because it's becoming endemic throughout the city rather than just one intersection or someplace where there's a parking issue. It seems to be the new normal.
What will the timeline be on that, that you're looking at that code?
A month. We have to, we're still looking at other cities ordinances. We got the one from Rancho, there's a couple of other places we want to look at. And then the gentleman to my right needs to sign off on that. And then we can bring it forward.
Thank you. So what did you say?
Well, I was just going to ask, at the end of your presentation, we might talk about the concerns on Van Buren as far as the traffic signal?
Okay. Do we have it on the list here somewhere? Can we jump ahead?
No, we don't have it.
She was just making like an addition.
You want to add it?
Yeah, because, you know, looking at the budget, we got money for traffic mitigation from the High Grove Developments. But it seems like we spent them, and I don't really know where we spent them or if we have. Well, obviously, we'll be collecting money, but, you know, they're not built out. So maybe we need a discussion on that.
We can bring that for discussion. The High Grove Development was development impact fees. That's one-time money, so that's not a recurring fund.
Right.
So as.
It was the community, and I remember reading that, this was, I'm being told that this was going to be, it could be spent on traffic mitigation because of those, you know, so it'd be traffic signal.
It can be, and that's something, I think, at one point or another, each of you has come to me with concerns on traffic signals on Mount Vernon, at one place or another.
Right.
And so that is certainly, we can certainly put this on the list and look at it. I mean, I've had suggestions for everything from, put a roundabout to traffic lights, to put flashing stop signs. So, you know, if all five of you have this, have brought this to me at one point or another, I think it's worth that we put this on the list and bring it back and throw it in the priorities.
And just real quickly, we were told by staff, because a lot of people want it where the school is, but because it's uphill and then downhill, we were told it'd be too dangerous to try to signalize that, that all the traffic would just start stacking. So we need to do some awareness on that.
Which school, Grant Terrace?
Grand Terrace Elementary.
Terrace View.
I mean Terrace View Elementary.
On the top of the slope.
Is that something you guys want to add to the list?
Well, yeah, we like to talk about traffic signals. It was brought up too on the last discussion, but.
It's been around at least three years.
Mayor, is it okay if we say, rather than saying traffic signals, we say the traffic, a variety of devices that could be used to control that intersection in a better way?
Traffic mitigations.
Traffic mitigations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Umbrella.
We'll add that to, when we come back to the priorities and really set the priorities, we can add that to it because part of this is we have to come up with at least a wild guess on what these things cost too. So we can get an idea of where those priorities, those priorities hit. But I think that's a great one to add.
Because like Councilmember Rolles did say, you know, we were told we were getting traffic signals when the High Grove was being developed. And all of a sudden, it's one-time money. I mean, I don't know what happened. We were promised a moon and we got barely a little moon rock.
Well, we have spent that High Grove money already. I remember we spent it on the intersection at Preston and Barton and we spent it on the intersection of Canal, Mount Vernon and Grant Terrace Road years ago when we first started getting some. Because I, you know, city manager Duffy, we were talking about it and he was also talking about the traffic lights. But the point is, with traffic signals, is the question is, is if somebody's going to run a stop sign, are they going to run a traffic light? So that's why a traffic study like Councilmember Roble suggested, where all the different devices could be studied and see which one could be the most effective, the safest and that sort of thing.
Yeah, because it's one-time money, but it was never intended to be recurring money. It's going to run out.
It's about $1,300 a dwelling unit that's paid into the fund, as I recall. And, you know, business is booming over there, so.
I will have to see how much is still left in that, in that fund.
As to Mount Vernon and, I mean, Van Buren and Mount Vernon, yes, I support Councilmember Rolles' comments in that regard. Seems like, I don't know, COVID created an inability of people to figure out who has the right of way at a four-way stop. And so you have to approach that intersection and I drive it often with a lot of diligence.
All of the Mount Vernon intersection, I mean, DeBarry, Pico, Maine, they're all issues in one form or another. So we need to look at the mechanism and how that's done and assign a cost to it and then put it on the priorities. The other one that, you know, we kind of all keep missing because we don't drive that direction that much is the one out on Grant Terrace and Mount Vernon and Canal up on the top of the hill, which is also one of those places that a stop sign seems to be optional.
Not only for vehicle traffic, the foot traffic too. Because it's like you're playing that old game Frogger trying to get across, you know.
So those are all things we can address as part of it. I think that's a great one to add to the list. Okay. Truck and bus ordinances, I think we had the workshop last time on that. Is there anything we need to address, change? Can we pull that one off?
Well, we look in, we had the workshop, except for fines and fees and enforcing this. I know we have a couple of issues with people pretty much disobeying or just doing whatever they want to do.
You're looking at increasing fines?
Yeah, something to make it so they stop doing it. I don't think that's one of the issues is.
It's the enforcement.
Yeah, the enforcement part, they'd rather pay the fine than just continue to do what they're doing because the fine doesn't.
Okay.
Doesn't hurt.
And that dovetails, is do we have the capacity to enforce our current ordinances?
Yes, that's a big point.
Do we have the staffing for it?
Depends on the level, and I'm not trying to be snarky or anything.
Yes, you are.
Go ahead and get it out.
It depends on the level of compliance from our citizens. Do we have the capacity to enforce every ordinance at all times on everybody? Absolutely not. I mean, we have the capacity to pick and choose what are the high quality of life issues, but to enforce everything, no, we don't.
Do we have a halftime code enforcement slash dog catcher?
We have a weekday code enforcement and a weekend code enforcement person. And our code enforcement doubles as the dog catcher.
Yeah, because that's a heavy, that's a heavy workload.
Actually, she's on vacation, I'm the dog catcher for the next two weeks.
Too bad, too bad I don't have a dog.
So, but yes, the code enforcement and animal control double up. It's one person in both jobs. And, you know, it is, it comes to a level of compliance. And, you know, to draw an analogy, how many speeding tickets do people get on the freeway for driving 70? Because nobody's in compliance. And do we have the capacity to enforce that in that venue either?
Well, you get a couple of those, you learn.
And that's, hopefully, that's the tact. That's the tact that we're using with code enforcement. If we can selectively hit the worst, then the rest should fall in line. And my standard comment is, is well, how many code enforcement cases do you have open against you? None, because you comply with the code and you choose to behave. And our issue are the people who choose not to comply with the code, who are already self-selecting for the ones that are going to be difficult to get them to comply with the code. So it is a kind of a catch-22 on that.
Yeah, but I think my point is, is that during the week, code enforcement slash dog catcher, I think are in cap incompatible roles.
I think the issue of organizational capacity is going to be the overriding consideration as we move forward through this process and we actually identify or prioritize what we want to have happen. Oftentimes, at least in my experience, there's not been a direct relationship between goals established by the city council and the organization's capacity to fulfill those goals. And I think the fact that this list exists, I don't know how many projects are on here, how many so-called priorities are on here, is a perfect example of what happens when human resources have no relationship whatsoever to the goals established by the city council. So I'm hopeful that we engage in those serious discussions along with reconciling whatever we develop and approve with Vision 2030. Because we asked the staff to execute and implement that vision and our agenda items reflect the goal that that particular item refers to. So I guess what I'm saying to my colleagues is, I think we can be more successful if we narrow down our goals and try to align our human resources and financial resources with the goals that we have adopted and have the managers set objectives for each goal to the assigned department or person. So the accomplishment of those objectives will hopefully result in the accomplishment of the goal itself. It also enables the council and the city manager to better evaluate the performance of the organization. I'm not talking about individual employees, but just organizational progress toward adopted council goals.
So I agree with you. As this refines, we will get a much clearer view of what is truly important and what is not so important. And if at the end, you know, to use a perfect, the original example, if code enforcement is important, then we have fewer guys, you know, picking up dog waste at the dog park and more guys doing code enforcement. And we can shuffle our priorities and resources to meet those, the priorities on the list.
Mayor Phil Tenetson. I think we might be blurring the definitions a little bit here. Any overall, for example, if a developer starts to set, you know, like five-year goals and so on, strategies and priorities for a particular item don't really have anything to do with money. And the reason why they don't have anything to do with money is, is the regular guy on the street doesn't understand, you know, number one, how much it's going to cost. And number two, where the money's going to come from. And that's why there is another item on the column that says, "Next move." Next move and date. For the time being, we can put in a next move and the next move really comes down to, do we, you know, draw the stick schematic for underground utility plans? And then the date would be by what date? It kind of helps reprioritize everything from there. If we just kind of leave it open, certain things just never get attacked. And so the idea was that the tax aspect of it, the stuff that was going to yield taxes, should be our first priority because obviously that generates money that we need to be able to do things. And then second, in the infrastructure, it was, okay, this is money wishlist. But we have to be in a position to be able to grab that money. I think some of us learned when they went to up the state of California, how frustrating it was when they kept telling you that, well, yeah, but, you know, we really, you know, we don't really have you on anything other than the back burner. You have to be poised with something that will at least justify numbers to be able to go forward if that is a stick schematic or if that is a budget or if it is a, you know, a few things like that. Maybe an exhibit, maybe all it is is just an exhibit with a budget attached. That will get you at least in the door for the application. That will get you at least in the door for the application. The rest of the things that are in here, in most cases, has to do with a little bit lower priorities in timing. And then the, the other column of stuff is way out there. In other words, watch it, but do we have to spend a bunch of money to be able to do it, or no? But we need to watch it. That way, we can manage four different lists at the same time and actually know that our priorities are moving forward in all avenues. That's kind of, that's a, you know, the, the point made on the next move and date, in my mind, for further discussion, doesn't really, doesn't really cut what we were looking for. What we need is Star Drain Master Plan, how, where are we? Because the next time you do one of these, it's going to be, okay, have we made any progress between the last one and this one? That is completely separate from being able to fund it because technically, the city council can decide, you know, we don't have the cash to be able to go. But that's something that can be in our pocket. So anyway, that, that was kind of what the, the game plan is on, on this, and as we keep going further, I think you'll find that. Some of this is going to involve, especially in infrastructure development, huge chunks of money. I mean, the, what do you call it, the slope? The Mount Vernon slope? That's going to be a, a tremendous amount of money. But if we don't have something that shows them that we are ready, whoever they are that has the money, we won't get anywhere. So.
So at, at this point, we're trying to narrow, narrow down the stuff that we really want to look at, really want to look at, and take out the stuff that we've either decided we're, we're not important anymore or we're going to, we're going to look at differently. So we're, we're a step, a step away from where you want to be yet. And I, I think we've made great progress. We've got 10 minutes till the council meeting. Is it all right with you if we call a halt and then we will come back next council meeting?
No, let's finish.
Okay, so did you want to say something in closing? You had your light on. Do you want to say something?
Oh, no.
No, this light, I didn't know if you wanted to say something.
I'm just having it for them. No, I just want to say that we, you, you, the council did set up a task force on youth services. And so, we don't have anything on here relating to, to that being a priority.
I thought we had some, one of these with youth, youth priorities somewhere. But if we don't, we'll put that on there.
On page eight, it's got, but it's the, the Youth Appointment Parks Commission, Established Youth Council or Youth City Council Week.
That's, it has nothing to do with the youth services.
Right, right, right.
It will talk about a vibrant parks and recreation program for them, which people thought we weren't doing. Everything they, they talked about, we've been talking about.
All right, so we'll go ahead and- We'll put that on the list, and we'll come back next time and continue to grind it away. All right, thank you.
Hold on, Councilman Henderson wants to say one more.
I just wanted to echo Mr. Wilson's comments regarding projects in general, infrastructure projects in particular. And the numbers are, are significant for our infrastructure needs, but the approach that Mr. Wilson outlined in, in summary fashion has been used by a number of different cities over the years in terms of funding. For instance, our Storm Drain Project, rather, obviously, we can't fund it entirely, but we could fund the design incrementally, the design of it. And we could actually environmentally clear it without a significant amount of expense. So when there is a project that is going to be considered by the state or the feds, a project that is already designed and already environmentally cleared is going to rise, number one, to the list. That's the way the, the process works, and so I echo and support his comments in that regard. Thank you.
All right, well, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and get ready for the next council meeting, which will be, the next workshop, the next council meeting will be in five minutes, so.